Doing an audio check for Commissioner Colville. Can you hear me? Perfect, thank you.
Evening, everybody.
Hello there.
Hi Nick.
How's it going?
Yeah, yeah, it's going. How about yourself?
A good answer. I'll go with the same. I like it.
Hi, everyone. I'll be right back on. I'm just gonna call in. Evening, everyone. I will be back on when we get started proper.
Good evening, all.
Hey, Commissioners, how are you?
Fine, how are you?
Yeah, good, thank you.
Hello, Mike.
Hey, Stuart, everybody.
Good evening.
Hello, Mr. Eastwood, pleased to meet you.
Hi, nice to meet all of you in our virtual setting. So, great, great to see you all. Happy, happy to be here.
Welcome to camp.
I didn't know that we hired Patrick Marlowe. My goodness.
Okay.
Rob, I, I can't be the first person to say you look just like Patty Marlowe.
I, I've never heard that before. People usually want to ask me.
That's a good call, Nick. That is awesome.
Thanks.
Do we have Commissioner Rivlin?
It looks like he's, he's here, but he's not a panelist. Ryan, if you're there, can you promote Andrew Rivlin to a panelist? He's currently an attendee. All right, here we go.
This is Commissioner Rivlin. Can you hear me?
We can.
Now, now I'm clear. So, I think we are all present apart from Chair Ostrowski. So, I'm standing in for Maggie tonight. So, you'll have to bear with me. This is the first time I've, I've shared the Planning Commission meeting. So, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order. The meeting was the Campbell Planning Commission, June 8th, 2021. Corinne, could we start?
Are you looking for a roll call?
Yes, please.
All right, my sound was off.
Okay.
Commissioner Bookbinder.
President.
Commissioner Colville.
Present.
Commissioner Cray.
Yeah.
Commissioner Rivlin.
Present.
Commissioners, this is Sir.
Yeah.
Acting Chair Ching.
Yeah.
And Shere Ostrowski is absent this evening.
Correct. Thank you, Corinne. And I'll just make a note, this regular Planning Commission meeting will be conducted via telecommunication and is complying with the provisions of the Brown Act and Executive Order N29-20 issued by the Governor. And just before we start proceedings, on behalf of the Planning Commission, would like to formally welcome our new Campbell Community Development Director, Rob Eastwood. So, official, official welcome, Rob. I know we, we met at the Saka a few minutes earlier, and I think we're very much looking forward to, to working with you.
Thank you. I appreciate the warm welcome, and I know at the end of the agenda, there's a director's report, and hopefully we can catch up a bit more at the end of the agenda. But again, happy to be here and happy to see you all.
Looking forward to it. Okay, so, moving on. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes? Yeah. Any, any alterations, changes?
I believe I need to abstain. I was not available at the last meeting.
Okay. And do I have a motion for approval?
Yeah, I have moved on to our last of our May 11th Planning Commission meetings.
Second?
I'll second that. I'll second that.
Thank you, Adam. And could we have a voice vote, please, Corinne? Right, Corinne, are you?
Me?
Yes, could you have, could we have a voice vote, please?
Yeah, Commissioner Bookbinder.
Hi.
Commissioner Colville.
I abstain.
Commissioner Cray.
I.
Commissioner Zisser.
I.
And Acting Chair.
You, you did forget me, but I abstain, as I mentioned a few moments ago.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. So, Director Eastwood, do we have any communications for the Commission? Any agenda postponements, modifications?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not aware of any. I'll refer to the staff if they've seen any come in, but not to my knowledge.
Correct, we have nothing.
Okay, thank you. At this point in the meeting, we are opening it up to the public, where any member of the public may address the Commission on an item that is not on the agenda. You may speak up to five minutes, but the Planning Commission may not take any action. Would anybody like to speak on anything which is not in the agenda for tonight's meeting? Okay, seeing or hearing nobody, I'll move on to the agenda. Before we start the agenda, neither Commissioners, do we have any disclosures regarding the agenda tonight? Okay, with that, we'll go on to the agenda. We have three items. The first one is a city-initiated public hearing to consider the CEA Campbell 2022 to 2026 capital improvement plan for citywide projects for consistency with the Campbell General Plan. Staff is recommending that the project be deemed exempt under CEQA. Tentative City Council Meeting Date, June 15th, 21. I don't actually have a planner listed next to this. I don't know whether, actually, Daniel, you're volunteering?
That is me.
I'll say a few opening words and then hand it to Daniel. So, I know this comes to the Commission every year. It's, it's on every jurisdiction. We have to review the capital improvement plan to be consistent with the general plan. I did want to acknowledge, we do have as a resource, if you have any questions on factual information or projects listed in the capital improvement plan, we have the Chief of Police here, we do have the city engineer here, we have Will Fuentes from Finance here. Again, they're here as a resource. I know the focus is just on performance with the general plan, the one they recognize. They're in attendance as a resource, and with that, I'll hand it to Daniel.
Thank you, Rob. Yeah, so that's really the, the extent of the Planning Commission's purview is to simply identify conformance with the general plan. I do have a slide that I'll pull up if that will facilitate the discussion. Generally, this is done by the city's planning agency. The city's past practice is to forward this to the Planning Commission for your consideration. So, let me pull up that slide. Okay, so here we have the new CIP items and requests for additional appropriations. As noted in the staff report, just for expediency, since the previous CIP items had already been found in conformance with the general plan, the staff report generally only focuses on new capital projects and additional appropriations. With that, the staff will take any questions the Commission may have.
I have a couple, if it's okay to have me get started. So, for program, Project 19 MM, what does the traffic calming program consist of? Like, where have we been calming traffic? Where do we plan to calm traffic, and how is that decided?
Amy, are you?
Yes, I, I'm here, I'm here. I'm Amy O'Leary, City Engineer. I can answer the question on traffic calming. Hello? We have started this program a few years ago, and there have been a few locations where we have been able to install some traffic calming devices, and they include speed homes. So, we've had, recently, we've done them on Richley, Campbell Avenue. We did some other amenities on Christopher. And so what happens is that the neighborhood, if they find that there's a need for traffic calming, they then get, get their neighbors together, then they have to submit a petition to the city, right? And then there's a whole process that we have in place. And as part of this new funding, we then hope to continue that program. So, we do have a list of streets that where we have received interest, but it really is then up to the neighborhood to follow through on getting the petitions. So, that requires a 50% initial signatures from the neighbors on that street. And then from there, we do what we call, like, you know, some studies. We gather data, and then from there, we do additional surveys before we do an installation.
Thank you. That sounds very exciting. I'm, I'm very, very happy to hear about that. On, I, I only have notes on four of these, so, don't worry, it won't be that many. For, I just want to say for Project 23 JJ, which is the extending trail along the west side of the pruneyard area, the city can manage it. What happens if Caltrans turns us down? It says, if, we'll do that if Caltrans is okay with it. I, I believe it was originally the developer was going to do that. They could not manage to negotiate with Caltrans. They just handed the money to the state, sorry, handed the money to the city, and the city's going to try and do that. But what if Caltrans does not want to play ball with us?
Yeah, we're really hoping that they do want to play ball with us, right? Because we see this as an important extension. But if they don't, the way we have written the agreement with the pruneyard is that we can use that money towards other bike and pedestrian improvements in the vicinity.
Thank you, that's, that's sensible. See. I just want to say, Project 23 JJ, the parking guidance system downtown, I'm very, very excited about that, and hopefully that'll give us an idea of how much parking we actually need and how utilized our garage star. Lastly, Project 24 CC, the expansion of the off-ramp for southbound 17 at Hamilton. Is that expected to, I guess, was this planned before SB 743? Is this expected to improve congestion even given it's used demand, or will this just add more traffic? I, I have general concerns about any kind of highway expansion, kind of close to a highway expansion.
So, for this project, it's been identified that there is a need to signalize the intersection as you come off the off-ramp of 17 with White Oaks. But what we need to do is, we need to interconnect that signal with the existing signal at Camden.
Oh, pardon me, I'm sorry. That's, that's Project 26 JJ. I'm talking about 24 CC, the one at the, no worries, there, there's two projects that are about 17. That's 17 northbound at Camden, this is 17 southbound at Hamilton.
Oh, at Hamilton.
It's adding an extra lane to the off-ramp.
Yeah, so that has been identified as one where we need to, we need to upgrade, upsize the off-ramp at 17 in Hamilton, and we have collected some developer contributions already. This project has been in the books for a few years. We're just trying to pull the money together. It's a measure B funded project.
Okay, just out of curiosity, like, when you say it's been identified as a need, how was it identified?
It's through the Measure B program and the highways.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so this, this is sort of the county.
Correct, correct, that the, how the county Measure B program.
Okay. Those are all my questions. Okay, thank you very much for, for explaining that.
You're welcome.
I've got a couple of quick ones, just in terms of what the Planning Commission's purview today, in terms of the, you know, general plan. I really don't have any problems, but it sounds like we have a little leeway. So, let me just ask a couple of very quick questions. One, to follow up on one of Adam's questions, the parking guidance system, 230,000, we say it's, it's funded with private funds. What, what, what does that mean? What are the private funds? Where does the funding come from?
At the moment, it's funded through the OPa development, and there's a deficient number of parking spaces, right? So, through that project, it's been identified that, I don't remember exactly the count. I think it's about roughly 30 parking spaces at the moment. So, there is a, a mitigation fee for that. And at the, at the time, I think right now, we're looking at $6,000 per parking space, and that was really based on 27, $20, $17.
Okay, I, I didn't quite catch you, Amy. So, there were some projects that didn't have enough parking, and they, they put some money into a fee?
Yeah, this is, yeah, from the OPa development in downtown.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And just one other question, just for the heck of it, I'll throw it out here, because it just caught my eye, because I know we got the new police headquarters being built, or very soon being built, hopefully. But I noticed that the furniture fixtures and equipment is budgeted at like 2.8 million, but it says unfunded. I know there are various unfunded projects, but is that, is that a worry that the FFE for the new police headquarters is unfunded at this point?
Well, I'm wondering if our finance director can lay onto that, and on that. Will, are you here?
I'm sure. I, I, I'm so, I'm so, so, so right now, I'm, we've, we've not, we've not yet, I did, I did, we've not yet, I identified, I'm, yet, on how to pay, how to pay for the FF and E. Although, we, 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 we are, we are, we, we are are, we are also talking, talking to the state. And, um, they, um, they, um, they may, they may be, they may be able on to, 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 to grant, to pay for the FF the FF, the FF and E. If we can't get a, if, if, if we can't get a grant for the state, then we, 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 we could, we could take the amount of, how much a general fund. Um, but it would be, it would be preferred, if we can, to get a high grant that would come from the that would, that would come from the state. We, we should, we should know for sure. I'd say the, the, the end of June. But I, I, I do, I do think that we, we will be, we will be able to, to, to pay for the, the expense.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, that's good. I, it sounds like it's still kind of an issue, and I know that we're getting kind of closer, but it seemed like it was still a year or two out.
Yeah, I think it's two years out still.
Thank you.
I have a question. It's my understanding that, that we're not supposed to comment on our support or non-support for specific items, but I, I did want to find out about, and I'd like a confirmation that that's what, what's, what, what we're doing here is, is basically, you know, supporting, determining whether this is in line with the general plan. But there is a, there, what I wanted to find out is that there is one issue, there is one item, the armored rescue vehicle, as it's called, and what I wanted to find out is if there is any detailed information on, on support, on supporting the purchase of that, that the department has put together beyond what is in the, the CIP. Specifically, any, any historical data, anything on past incidents that would support, further support the purchase of that, whether or not we can have, get access of that, to that information.
Yeah, I can answer that, that question. Over the last year, we've really put a big emphasis on reaching out to our community to get input and feedback on this request. And over the last year, we have created a video that, that answers a lot of the questions you're talking about historically, what we've had, why we needed, the types of calls we're using it for. We've put information on Nextdoor and on our webpage. We also had an in-person event where we borrowed Santa Clara Police Department's armored vehicle and allowed residents to come, take a look at it, see it firsthand. And had plenty of conversations over the last year, talking about the value of it and why it's still a request of ours.
Okay, I, I just, I did look at your site, and I didn't see much on it. So, I'm, I'm wondering if somebody can forward any, any, any information or links that that cover what you're, you've talked about, Chief? Beyond what's in the, what's, beyond what's in the CIP.
I, I can get some link sent over to you.
I appreciate that, thank you.
And, and just so you know, Commissioner, it's not the first time that was brought up. I don't think you were with us yet, but there was a big meeting maybe half a year ago where there was a lot of concern and talk and discussion as well. And there was a Denny's incident that you weren't, or maybe not privy to regarding the, the Campbell Department having to borrow a sister in neighboring cities rescued armored vehicle to help with the situation. And definitely not the first time you've brought it up. Good information. I'm glad you're asking questions. Chief Bird, thank you for joining us today. I always like it when you guys sit in and join us. Thank you.
Just, just in a response to the Commissioner Colville's comments, actually, I am, I've done some research on this, and I, and I've, I've gone back to previous sessions and looked at committee, the council meetings and study sessions, and I'm familiar with the issues. And I've heard Chief Bird speak on this, and so, and I'm familiar with the Denny's incident. So, so I, I do have some background history on it. So, I'm not totally unfamiliar with it, okay? Okay.
Any, any more questions?
I had a question regarding the Measure O item. Let me pull it up on screen. I can give you the number. It referred to a fiscal year spend in 2025. Perhaps this is for the finance director. As I understood, the library's construction would be done in 2024. What, maybe I'm misreading it. What were the funds in 2025? And it also references related to that, that it's unfunded, but I, I was confused because I thought the funding came from the public. Perhaps I'm just misreading it.
Um, so, how long, let me, let me pull it up into here. I'm not quite there, but I will, okay. But it, 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 it should pay for, it should pay for the, 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 the the design cost. And, and, and also the, the cost of, the, the cost of construction. The, the FF and, and E cost of the, how, um, a, a cannot, a cannot be paid from bond funds. So, again, we, we, we we either need to pay for the FF and E for, 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 from a grant that would, that would come from the state, or, um, we would, again, take the FF and the FF and E expense from the, from the, the general fund. But let me, again, I'm pulling it up now. So, I'm sorry.
It was on Budget Book Page 522 is what I was reading, if you're at the same document, which was page 58 in our packet. I think I start to understand the funding.
Uh, I think I start to understand the funding, um, shortage, or not shortage, but unfunded element. And then, uh, my, yeah, I guess you sort of answered it by saying it pays for the construction costs. Perhaps it's, I guess the library ends in 2024, perhaps it's some extended police instruction.
Yeah, so, um. It's, 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 it's to pay for the, uh, uh, is to, is to, is to, is to pay for. I, 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 and, um, to, uh, uh, complete, um, the, uh, to complete the, uh, po- po- the police. As a stat- stat- action. Um, so. I, um. It, um, I think it, it goes into the, it, it, into, uh, uh, into, uh. Uh, December. Um, but right, uh, right now, um, it's a, it's a, it's a, uh. I'm going to update, um, and it, uh, it, it, it could change.
Okay, thank, that, that provides enough clarity. I appreciate that thing.
Thank you. Any, any further questions, staff? Okay, um, I, I had a question, clarification question. It goes back to, uh, Commissioner, this is subject, which is the armored rescue vehicle. I believe in last year's CIP, that was listed at $250,000. And this year it's 313,000. I, I wondered what the reason for the, the change over, over one year.
I think I saw Nord log on there. He may be able to explain the, the number differences for you.
No problem. Typically, our, our CIP covers a five-year period. And in last year's CIP budget, it covered the period of fiscal year 21 through fiscal year 25. So it only captured the first four payments for the armored rescue vehicle. And this year it just happens to cover the full five-year for the total amount of $312,000.
And, um, it has a useful life. Um, of 15 years, I noted.
Um, we, we talked with the manufacturer and it's, uh, closer to 20 to 25 years.
Okay. And the loaded cost, what would be the, because I, what would be the cost on, um. The annual running cost of this, roughly? I'm trying to gauge the, the, the cost over, over the life.
So the, we estimated it out that it's going to be about $12,000 per year for the life of the vehicle. And ongoing maintenance costs would be similar to any, uh, normal vehicle. And it's based on a, a Ford F550 frame, so, normal, um, oil changes and, um. Preventative maintenance as such. This vehicle wouldn't be driven on a daily basis. It would only be driven, uh, in very specific circumstances, so the mileage would, would be very low. So, I think, uh, very minimal upkeep on, on expenses.
So that'd be approximately about 15K a year. For, for the running expense on it.
Uh, probably 15 on the high end, yeah.
Right, okay. Okay, thank you. Um. If there's no more questions, um, I'll open the public hearing. Um, if any members of the public would like to, uh, talk on this item for, uh, up to two minutes. Nope, seeing or hearing nobody, um, I'll close the public hearing and open it up to the commissioners for discussion. Who would like to leave, uh, lead with this item?
I, I, you know, I guess I just say, I, I, it really does look like everything, including the armored rescue vehicle, which I know is very controversial in the. In the community, but it sure looks like everything, uh. All the capital improvement projects are, uh, consistent with the Campbell general plan, so I didn't have any problems with, with those.
Okay. Any other comment?
Uh, I, I think I said everything I wanted to say in the asking, ask questions, uh, portion. I, um, uh, I, I recognize that the armed rescue vehicle has been a controversial thing in the community. I feel like it's outside of our purview on the planning commission, and, uh, I, I'm excited about some of the things we have coming forward, especially the, uh. Uh, parking management in, uh, in downtown.
Guess I have a question here for, for Daniel, um, what we should have asked, asked this, uh, uh, earlier. Um, our, our purview remit for this particular meeting is to review just the new projects, not the existing ones. Is that correct?
Now, technically, you do review the entirety of the CIP, but for expediency, we do focus on the new projects and additional appropriations. But if you do want to comment on a, on a project that has been previously considered, you may do so.
Okay. Is, is any, are there any other comments from, from the commissioners here?
I'm not happy to make a motion if we're ready.
Um, before you do that, Commissioner, I, I have, I have one on the existing one, and this is type of. Uh, I express concern, in fact, voted against the, um, CIP last year, based on the Project 22 CC, which is the armored, um, rescue vehicle. Um. You know, I will say a few words on this, you know, this is, um, checking, our, our remit is to check consistency with the general plan. I, I guess maybe I'm just reiterating what I said before. I don't find it consistent, um, with policy HS 2.1, where it's meeting assistance needs and ensuring a safe, secure environment. Um, so just really for the record, whilst I, I understand and agree with the need to protect the officers and have. The ability to have that resource available to the community and to Campbell. Um, I'm not in favor of, um, Campbell purchasing it. The rationale in my mind is that while this is something that can help de-escalate instance. It can also, uh, work the other way, and has been shown to prove the other way, uh, especially with minority groups. Um, so I'm very concerned about that aspect of it. Um, I'm also concerned that if we actually purchase a vehicle, uh, we have a third of a million dollars. Of a, of an armored rescue vehicle. And actually, the best outcome for that vehicle is it for to be never used. Right? That would be a great outcome. Uh, that it's never actually used. The problem with that is somebody's going to turn around and say, why have we just bought a third of a million dollars worth of vehicle that costs us $15,000 a year, whatever, to maintain? And I think there will be pressure. Um, to demonstrate use, and what would worry me there, it may be used in circumstances where it's not appropriate. Because there might be pressure to actually show its use as opposed to, okay, we can get that resource, resource from another agency or from, uh, another city. Um, my other objection concern is, um, many of the issues and challenges that we see both in Campbell and in surrounding areas. Are related to, um, things which I can't see how a vehicle, uh, like this will help. Um, people suffering from mental illness, um, drug abuse. Uh, you know, just, just as, as a note, you know, I, I cycled down Los Angeles Creek Trail with my son, uh, at the weekend. Towards San Jose, to be fair, but not drawing borders, had three instances there. Um, two involving, um, one, I would say, a drug, uh, person with drug issues, one with mental issues. Um, both those people, uh, had, you know, were at risk. Um, and the other one was somebody driving like a madman, um, through the center of San Jose with two blown tires. And that was, that car was later, um, uh, in one of the streets which we parked. My point with this is that that funding could be used, uh, in other ways to maybe mitigate some of the things we more often see in this city. Um, and, uh, I, I, I think I'd also end with, um, the general comment on the militarization. Um, of the police, which is the general theme, and how this relates to HS 2.1. Is personally, that doesn't make me feel safe nor secure in what I'm seeing. So that's my personal view, but I do think it relates to, um, policy HS 2.1, and I think it is within our purview. And I'm re- restating that, um, for the record. Um, so with that, if there's no other comments, asks for.
Well, um, I, I'd like to then make a comment because, um, when I first read the, um. Uh, I suspect the chief wants to say something too, but, um, when I first read our agenda tonight, I was, uh, being the, uh, guy that's really new. I haven't done this before, that, uh, when I first read it, I didn't read the whole thing. Uh, and I realized that in theory, we're not supposed to, uh, comment on, uh, the appropriations. And before I, I, I came. I prepared a fair amount of information that, um, parallels, uh, Commissioner Ching's, um, comments. Um, uh, which I, I intend to actually forward to the council anyway, but, but I just want to reinforce. Uh, and, and since I'm not familiar with the, uh, the subtleties of whether or not, um. Uh, you know, capital equipment expenditure could or could not, uh, support the general plan. That's, that was an, an issue in my head myself, and, uh, the commissioner has expressed, uh, it, uh. Pretty much identically to, but I would, I would say, uh, whether or not that's, uh, that's, uh, true or justifiable. Um, I don't know, but, um, I'd just like to reinforce that I'm, I'm in the same place with this. I, 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 I've not have a, I'm not, uh, uh, in favor of this kind of expenditure, and that I'd like to get that on the record as well. For, for pretty much the same reasons, so.
Yeah, he's trying not to, uh, I, I think he's trying to relate it to the consistency with the general plan. You know, whether my comments are consistent, are, are relevant or rational, I'll let people judge, right? I feel it is, like, I guess I can express that view in, in this, in this, in this, um, uh, on this commission.
Vice Chair, I could have a moment to, to respond, if that's possible?
Please.
Um, yeah, I, uh, I, I definitely understand your concerns. Um, I actually went back and re-watched last year's meeting. To, uh, to hear those and, uh, and reflect on what was said last year, what's the discussions that have been going on this whole year and kind of where we are. Um, I, I won't, I won't respond to everything. I think we're, the focus of tonight is really that consistency. And I think there's two things in our request, one, the improved feeling of safety, which I understand that, that this, this purchase doesn't make you feel safer. And also an effective emergency preparedness program. Um, you bring up a lot of, of different, uh, issues, global, national issues. And I think it's important to look at the track record of the Campbell Police Department. There's a lot going on in, in the world around us, but, uh. Right now, we're focused on Campbell, and this is a Campbell request, and we had an actual military vehicle for about 20 years that we acquired from the military, from the Department of Defense. That we returned in 2019, and I think the track record on its use speaks for itself. It was, it was not misused. It was used, uh, appropriately and sparingly, and in the best interest of public safety. And, um, I didn't mention it earlier, but, uh, we also distributed a, a draft policy for the use of this proposed vehicle that's on our website. So. I think it's somewhat unfair to, uh, to link the misuse and, uh, a national dialogue of what's going on in other states around this country. And, uh, put that on our, on our plate and, uh, basically come to the conclusion that we are going to, um, not use it appropriately. Even though I feel very strongly that, that our track record has proven that we utilize resources like this appropriately and in the best interest of Campbell. But really getting back to, to the goals and objectives of the general plan. Uh, uh, what, uh, what, the comparison that I, I'd like to throw out there, because it's on the CIP, uh, coming up in the next few years, is, um. A replacement of our handgun, uh, handguns, that, that'll be before you, I think, in two or three years. But it's one of those things where there's a lot of people, um, in this community who don't like guns, who see a gun and feel unsafe. Just like, I think you're saying, you see a vehicle like this and it doesn't make you feel safer, or you see officers. What happened last week, running into an active shooter event, uh, and, and those situations don't make people feel safer. But I, what I would like for you to feel safe is knowing that the Campbell Police Department is appropriately trained and equipped. To deal with any emergency critical incident that comes our way. So I would, uh, I would ask you to, not asking you to change your mind, but ask you to change your perspective that it's not the, the look of the vehicle, whether that makes you feel safe. But knowing that the police department, your police department, is able to respond to a critical incident. Um, in a timely manner, in order to resolve it safely for our community. And last year, we had another incident where we were relying on a, um, armored vehicle from a neighboring jurisdiction where. Um, somebody had been shot nine times, and that vehicle didn't arrive until an hour later after our officers had already, uh, conducted, uh, a rescue. Um, putting, putting their lives in, in ra- in danger, so, um, I think it's been proven even of the, the opponents of this have acknowledged that there is a need for this type of vehicle. Whether or not they want, uh, Campbell to, uh, own their own, I guess is up for debate, but at the, at the. At the core of this is whether or not we're prepared to handle emergency situations in a timely manner. And I feel very strongly that, uh, without this piece of equipment, that it puts our community in, uh, in, in more danger. Based on our, our need to rely on our partners, um, and it's already shown within the last year that it hasn't been able to arrive on time, so.
Thank you, Chief Berg, for your, your comments there. You know, I, I don't think I'm arguing that we don't need a resource. I'm arguing whether Campbell needs to own that resource, because, you know, it, it's a balance of risk, right? If we really want to be safe, we have a police officer on every corner. Um, so you, so you have to, have to balance, balance that, and if that resource is being spent on this, it's not being spent on something else. Um, and I, I, you know, I think the police have been challenged with many things that they're probably not really in their remit, right? A lot of the things the police have to do is because probably there's other agencies that don't have a resource and. You, you, you're having to, to look after instances which probably aren't really within the, the police, um, you know, what the police are intended to do. Um, you know, I, I think Campbell's a great city. I, I hate to, I'm sure you view the police as a police service. I, I, I'm just worried that the perception and the optics in some respect might change Campbell. Um, and it turns to be more of a police force, and I know that's not your intent, not, not the action, but. I think a lot of the optics will be seen that when a small town like, uh, Campbell with 40,000, 45,000 people. Um, if, if we went ahead with this purchase, but anyway, go, going off, going off base there and appreciate your, your feedback.
I could just. Comments. One, one piece of clarification, that $50,000 number, that's not above and beyond the $300,000 purchase price. That's the cost of the vehicle over the life of the vehicle, 12 to 15,000 dollars a year, so there's not an additional cost on top of that.
Yes, yeah, the, the 15,000, that annual, annual running cost, yeah.
Uh, I had one, uh, follow-up question, uh, uh, Chief Bird, you mentioned a, uh, a proposed policy for the use of the vehicle, which sounds like an excellent idea. Is that, was that published anywhere, or is that on website, or I just tried to have a look for that and I didn't see it anywhere obvious?
So if you go to the police department's website, and it's under the capital improvement project requests. On, in the about us, under capital improvement project request. Both of our requests are in there, and then at the bottom of. Both of our requests are in there and then at the bottom of the rescue vehicle, there's a link to.
I uh I see it, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other comments from the commissioners?
I'll just chime in just really quickly to say that I do remember in our discussion from a year ago when I Commissioner Ching spoke really very eloquently, Commissioner Zisser. Those are really good points. I I have uh like Commissioner Zisser, I did some research on this too over over the months, etc. I have seen the police uh video. I I guess I might disagree with one thing that Chief Bird just said about, you know, not saying not putting on Campbell what's going on nationally, but I think every every police force in every city has to, you know, grapple with those issues, obviously, and and you know, all politics is local, right? So uh and I think, you know, just to paraphrase Commissioner Ching in in a nutshell, he's asking really a very good question, is is it really overkill? They have this thing uh this uh armed rescue vehicle. It's it's a damn good question, it's it's a it's a it's a tough one. Uh, I think the police department did make pretty good arguments, which I, you know, I can't get into here, it would take us forever. We don't want to get into a real long one on it, but uh you know, and in terms of the general plan, I, you know, it certainly helps and, you know, helps our preparedness, our response to emergencies. Is it too much? I, you know, we got twenty twenty five year life, we're we're a small city, but we're in the middle of them, you know, one of the major urban areas of the of the world, really, so. I guess that's kind of where I would would come down to it. I wouldn't doubt, since it's not in this year's uh funding, that it still comes up with city councils, got to give the final approval at some point and community might weigh in again on this thing, but uh I think those are all really, really good points.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Cray. Um, do I have a proposal for motion here?
Yeah, I will, I'll just move that the Planning Commission adopted a resolution finding the proposed capital improvement plan is consistent with the Campbell general plan.
Who's speaking?
Who's Commissioner Cray?
I'll second the motion.
Bookbinder?
Hi.
Oh, are we voting?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
I didn't hear who the second person was.
That was Commissioner Rivland, second.
Who was that, Zisser?
Uh, Commissioner Rivland seconded it.
I I need to do that for the minutes. Thank you, guys. Okay, I'll do the roll call. Commissioner Bookbinder?
Hi.
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 Rivland.
Hi.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna abstain.
Acting Chair Ching. Chair Ching?
None.
You get that, Corinne?
Uh, six. So I have a one no, one abstain and one absent, so yeah, I do have a four one 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 in favor. That's total, so I have uh our our chair is absent.
That sounds right.
So that passes on majority vote. Thank you, I'll move on to item two. So PLN twenty dash twenty one dash sixty three, public hearing to consider the application of PLN dash twenty twenty one dash sixty three of Greg Benton for site and architectural review permit to allow a reduced second story side yard setback on approximately eight hundred and fifty square foot addition to an existing single family residence on property located at twelve oh four Monica Lane. Staff is recommending that this item be deemed categorically exempt on sequer. Uh, Planning Commission action is final unless appealed in writing to the city club within ten days. Uh, project planner, senior planner, Daniel Farmer.
Thank you, let me load up this PowerPoint. So we do have an application for a site and architecture review permit for twelve oh four Monica Lane. Uh, this is a six thousand square foot, single family residential property located on Monica, south of Westfield Avenue, uh just near the San Jose City border. Uh, located within the R one six zoning district and outside of any area or neighborhood plan. The proposal would add a eight hundred and fifty square foot uh second story addition above the existing garage shown here, maintaining the existing five foot, ten inch setback of the ground floor. Uh, with regard to the architectural design, the addition would largely maintain the ranch style appearance of the home. Uh, balancing the the bulk of massing between the ground and second floor and largely comply with the city's design guidelines for additions to single family homes. Uh, additions in this area are not generally subject to sign architecture review by the planning commission. Normally, uh such additions are reviewed by staff as a ministerial building permit review just for strict conformance with numeric standards such as floor area ratio and height. However, the applicant, the zoning code does provide a mechanism for an applicant to request a reduced uh side setback for a second story addition outside of a variance process. In order to prove that request, the planning commission must make two specific findings that are identified at the top of the screen. Uh, largely, these findings have been interpreted by the planning commission in the past as a measure to ensure that the addition does not overly impact the neighboring property by casting shadows, blocking views, uh creating privacy intrusions. But it's discussed in further detail in the staff report and as shown here with the applicant's privacy plan and photograph of the two homes with the neighboring property. Uh, the relationship is um rather favorable for the applicant in that the neighboring property has a solid wall and the addition would effectively look at the wall and door down to the neighbor's garage uh precluding uh any typical privacy impact that you would see where you would have a second story home that had multiple windows along that adjacent sidewall. Uh, therefore, staff does believe that the planning commission can affirmatively find the necessary findings for approval and does recommend that the commission adopt the resolution approving the sign architectural review permits. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Any questions for for Daniel?
I have a question about uh the the next door neighbors setback. Is the next door neighbor setback the standard setback?
Uh, does not appear to be so, that wall is a straight vertical two story wall.
So you think it's below the minimum there too as well?
We would have to double check the existing setback, but typically in order for a two story home to satisfy the setback, the second story is typically offset from the ground floor, which does not appear to be the case with the neighboring property.
Um, just real quick, did we skip the SARC report?
I believe that comes after staff presentation.
Ah, that's why, I was, sorry about that.
I just have a couple of quick questions, Daniel. Uh, oh, just because I can't tell from the, but the uh the house, so the house on twelve oh four Monica, will that have any windows on the side facing the uh the neighbor?
Yeah, let me double check, let me pull up those plans.
I couldn't tell.
It looks like there will be a couple of small windows.
I could, I guess, like, because I was just imagining that the house with the second story now next door maybe didn't didn't put any windows on its side to protect the privacy of their neighbor there, so. I'm just trying to get it, uh apples and apples. But my uh my other question for you, because I've never seen it in a report this way, and I thought that was a good way to do it. And and the second story looks fine to me, but uh you mentioned that the second story is forty three percent as large as the first story. And I know that I I can't remember seeing a percentage like that in any of our past reports. It seems like a good way to kind of look at these things. I'm sure we don't have a standard for percentage of the second story versus the first story that's ideal, but uh what's the what's the general guidelines there is just.
That was that was a numeric benchmark, but you're right, we don't really have a standard or really um a full analysis that would be able to be used to cross compare applications. If I recall, we had used this type of analysis in the long ago past uh dealing with a particularly large home as a means to balance out the square footage between the first and second floor, but you're correct, it's not a typical uh practice.
But the forty three percent is a pretty good, is just a good percentage, I guess, something that.
Well, to the extent that, and as noted in the SARC and the the staff report, the guidelines do have an illustration. It's actually, you don't want that second story to be too large or too small. And so in that regard, forty percent kind of feels somewhere in that middle point.
Okay, all right, not to belabor, I like I like the illustration, it did help, yeah, thank you.
Uh, I just know another question, has has the city received either positively or negatively anything from the neighbor regarding this reduced setback?
Uh, no, no correspondence was received. Though I believe the applicants did reach out to their neighbor.
There's no more questions, it's my bad, I should have done the SARC report after Daniel's presentation. So this came up a couple of weeks ago um for uh at SARC. Um, we were supportive of it. Uh, I think the main things were occurring to us was was this going to cause a privacy issue? Um, doesn't doesn't seem to be. Um, and uh was it generally in keeping and was the portions of amassing um an issue? So it looked like a nice design in keeping with the area uh and not a not a privacy issue, so SARC was supportive of this um this application. Um, if there's no further speakers, um I'll open it up to the public hearing. Um, and uh would the applicant like to speak? You don't need to, but you're more than welcome um to to say anything.
Yes, hi, um, I don't have anything in particular to add. I I've read through the report and I've read through all the conditions of approval and they all seem very appropriate for this project and we want to see and be good neighbors as much as they want us to be. So I think um one one thing I will, I guess, add about the window question is that on the south side there where we're next to the two story house. Uh, the only second story window is actually in a hallway and it purposely is raised up, the sill of that window is raised up high to be more of a decorative window. It's not a window for view. And it's just some to let some light into a hallway. And so we've kept the window situation to that. Uh, the only other new windows are on the first floor for for a living room. And we've kept those very reasonable too, just because we want to be able to have furniture in the room as well. Um, I don't have any anything further to add.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Not seeing or hearing anything, I'll close public hearing and turn it over to uh the commissioners, who would like to lead with this one?
I can start out, um, I don't have much to add, we looked at this at SARC. It looked good to me then, it looks good to me now, I'm uh any of the concern, the concerns were basically about um is it oddly shaped? No, it's not, are the privacy impacts? No, it looks onto a blank wall. Um, I have that I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I just say it real briefly, um, I I drove by the other day to just take a look at the streets. I I haven't actually been up in that neighborhood myself and and uh the design looks fine and certainly is consistent with the neighborhood. There's a a a a mix of single story and two story homes. Uh, it's it's very lovely street and uh looks like the design to me is uh the works well in that neighborhood, so uh I I'm I'm good with it.
For the comments or to uh would we like to propose a motion?
I, hey, I would just say I thought it looked good too and really didn't have any problems. I think the privacy issue was the biggie and there doesn't seem to be one and the design looks fine, so. I I guess I can move that we adopt the planning, Campbell Planning Commission adopt a resolution. Reference attention one, approving a site and architectural review permit to allow a reduced second story side yard setback for an approximately eight hundred and fifty square foot addition to an existing single family residence at twelve oh four, if that's the right address. Yeah, twelve oh four Monica Lane.
I'll second that.
Thank you, uh Corinne, do you want to roll call?
Commissioner Bookbinder?
Hi.
Commissioner Colville?
Hi.
Commissioner Cray?
Hi.
Rivland?
Hi.
Commissioner Zisser?
Uh.
Chair Ching?
Hi.
It's a six zero one.
Thank you, and um planning commission action is final unless appealed in writing to the city club in ten calendar days. Thank you and good luck with the uh your remodel.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the final item. Uh, public hearing to consider the application PLN dash twenty twenty one dash fifty seven of Kimberly McCarthy for a conditional use permit to allow establishment of dog training facility South Bay Dog Training within the existing tenant space and property located at one eight six East Sunny Oaks Avenue Suite C. Staff is recommending this item be deemed categorically exempt under sequer. It's a project planner, assistant planner, Naz Healy. So please, Naz.
Thank you, good evening. I'm going to go ahead and bring up my PowerPoint presentation. Okay, can everyone hear me and see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so as mentioned, item three is an application for a conditional use permit to establish a dog training facility at one eighty six East Sunny Oaks Suite C. So the project site is an existing commercial and industrial development located between Winchester Boulevard here and Santa Moss Expressway over here. And then this is in the M one light industrial zoning district. And the dog training facility would be located in the front commercial building that's located along Sunny Oaks. The proposal is for a conditional use permit to establish the dog training facility, which would be within a twelve hundred square foot tenant space. And this would be within an existing building. The business hours um are proposed uh between ten AM to nine PM daily with staff hours and additional one to two hours before and after to allow for setup and cleanup. Um, and those are the requested hours and maybe the likely hours, but staff recommends allowing six AM to eleven PM, uh which would be consistent with the standard commercial hours just to allow for future flexibility. There would be fifteen minutes between the end of one training session and the start of the next. And this would minimize the number of people and dogs on site at any one time. Um, and the proposal would allow up to six dogs at any time within a a training session. So here we have the floor plan and all activities will occur inside the building um where there will be two training areas and then a uh potty yard. Um, and then the applicant provided and it's included in the attachments, a sanitation and waste management plan. So with that, staff recommends that the planning commission approving a conditional use permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Naz, and I don't believe there's any SARC report for this because there's no modifications to the building.
Yes, it did not go to a SARC meeting.
And any questions to uh to Naz? If there's no questions, I'll open it up to um the public hearing. If there's no questions, I'll open it up to the public hearing. Would the applicant like to say say anything?
I would. Hi, I'm Kimberly McCarty, and I just wanted to be here and say thank you guys for considering our application. My business partner Natalie and I, there's Natalie. We've been in the dog training industry for over fifteen years. We have a lot of experience handling dogs, and we are really super. Excited to have the potential opportunity to work in the community of Campbell. So thank you so much for considering us, and. If you do have further questions for me, I'm available to answer them.
Thank you. Any any questions for Kimberly?
I just have one question, Kimberly, as long as you're here, which I thank you, and I'm a dog person, so I'm already biased, you know, but. The it's it's I like the way it's put indoor area containment system for dogs. I know that 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 property is actually relatively small, and there's that one little green strip in front, which is where, you know, the dogs will. Exit their cars and probably be going, but I guess, can you explain what what is that? That's inside your facility? There's a green area with that for dogs?
Yeah, we will be constructing a we call it the potty yard, and it will have a. Green space as well as a a multiple tier tray system for for full sanitation.
And I guess you want to encourage the 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 dog owners to bring the dogs straight inside instead of.
No, we will be discouraging elimination inside, but we want the possibility for them to eliminate inside in the proper area. Most of the dogs that we will be handling will be with their guardians, and so we always encourage them to toilet their dogs before entering the building. Classes are very short to fifty minutes long, so most dogs can hold it that long. But we do want to have an opportunity for them to eliminate if they do need to.
Thank you. Can I ask, would you anticipate? I mean, I it's it's this parking lots in front of the whatever there's five or six businesses there, and then the curb and. Would you anticipate and would you see that as a problem is if dogs are going to go before they come in? And any mess that's going to be, there isn't any natural place since it's basically a parking lot. As far as I can tell, in front of the building. So seems to me we'd want to discourage. I I'm not sure the other businesses would be pleased with dogs. Doing their business out in front of the I'm fun of the building.
Yeah, good question. So there is a green space. Actually, there's a strip of grass right at the curbside. I don't know if you can tell that from the plans, but there is a grass space. But in addition, we will be putting out a elimination bin in front of our building. So that if there is any potty accidents out front, it is disposed of immediately. And if the owner don't do it, we will be doing it ourselves.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Any other questions? Can open it up in any any? Feedback comments from the public? Okay, seeing hearing or seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing and hand it over to the commission.
I think I I may have missed. I probably should have asked that this before, but I noticed that the applicant asked for somewhat more restricted hours than staff recommended. Is the measure or is the a resolution that we have drafted using the staff's recommended hours?
Yes, so I mean, they don't need to operate between those times, but that would allow them to, you know, in the future, they want to make any adjustments to their business. They wouldn't have to come back for a modification. Just for something very minor, like. Just adjusting the hours.
That sounds cool. That is my question. Thank you.
So I do have another I do have a question for for staff, but it's obviously not in the but I did notice when I went by there that there's actually an eating establishment. In was one of the businesses is a little deli place. And I'm I'm assuming since there's no mention of it, that there's no. Restrictions with regards to having a dog training facility in the same or near. An eating establishment.
Not that I'm aware of, and I mean. I have a dog and, you know, I bring her to restaurants sometimes in outdoor area and.
Yeah, I know. It sounds like a silly question, but it's different than people being, you know, yeah, but I just wanted to ask if there was any anything in our policies that would. Be a problem with that, and I don't personally see a problem, but I wanted to ask.
In indoors, there are restrictions from the health department on having dogs inside somewhere where there's food intended for people, but. I'm not aware of any restrictions on having those uses located nearby.
Okay, any any other comment from the commissioners? Nope, if not, I I will suggest since Commissioner Cray is a dog person. Would you like to make a motion?
If I'm not barking up the wrong tree, I'll.
Motion might be the wrong expression in this.
Very rough meeting. Just move that the planning commission adopt the resolution. Reference attachment one again approving a conditional use permit PLN twenty twenty one dash fifty seven to allow the establishment of a dog. Training facility, South Bay Dog Training at one eighty six East Sunny Oaks Avenue Suite C.
Thank you. Do we hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Corinne, do you want to do a roll call?
Commissioners.
Present. Sorry, I.
Colville.
Hi.
Cray.
Hi.
Hi.
Yes, sir.
Hi.
Chair Cheng.
Hi.
Six zero one.
So that that passes. The planning commission action is final unless appealed in writing to the city clerk within ten calendar days. Thank you and good luck with your your new venture.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Corinne, I hope the minute the minutes show that Commissioner Colville's dog actually made that vote, so.
I might need his name.
Snuck her in there.
And I saw Commissioner Bookbinder didn't make any disclosures about being a cat person, so he might be. Okay, with that, it brings us to the end of the agenda items. Director Reese, would do you have anything to report to the commission?
Do, yes, addition here. I know to have a director's report, and it was jurisdiction I came from. I know there's a written report. In your agenda, and I thought I'd take the opportunity to just kind of do three things with it, just. I guess, report out the things you you have that happened at the city council. So there was a lot of discussion on the parklet program. They are extending that for ninety days, and there'll be a lot of discussion if that's. Going to go permanent after that, as COVID winds down with the restrictions on indoor and outdoor dining. But anyways, just so you know where that's at with the downtown parklet program. The next was the one before that was the extension of the local emergency till August eleventh. And then the council did approve the one year contract on house keys, which helps which helps service the city on the the BMR program. So all that is in your report. That was part one. Part two, I've been here officially a week. One thing I want to let you know, I've been looking at the staff reports that the staff puts together, have some initial thoughts on some restructuring. I think a little bit more on staff analysis recommendations could help both the commission and the city council. So it's something I'll work with staff on over the next month or two, just kind of formalizing more, getting the facts upfront, and then having the rules that apply and any analysis of staff with a nice professional recommendation. To to help you and weaving and reading these reports. So expect that, I think, in the next month or next meeting, I will provide you a template of what that looks like. So it's not a surprise, but do anticipate that change in our in our reports coming forward. And then last but not least, I'll just say again, happy to be here. New to Campbell, longtime county resident. I was the. Playing division manager over at the County Santa Clara for six years, was their planning commission secretary for six years, was their. Zoning administration hearing officer for two years, actually continue to be. So really familiar with these types of hearings, quasi judicial hearings, the legislative hearings that go with that. But anyways, it's it's a whole different format for me. I come from a jurisdiction that dealt with a lot of rural issues, a lot of issues with quarries, a lot of issues with agriculture, a lot of issues with Stanford University. So going to a sort of an infill urban environment, but it's still the principles around planning land use are generally the same. But with that, happy to see you, happy to be here, happy to see you. If you have any questions or me to help you familiarize yourself with me, more than happy to be a resource and be here and answer any questions you have.
Thank you, and and welcome welcome again. Please give us feedback, right? You're coming from a a new city or a different city, so again, especially in, I I think when you first start a new job, you get the best perspective. So, you know, please, as you see them and reserve them. Personally, I'd be very grateful for feedback and things that we might be able to do better. So I look forward to that.
I do, absolutely. Hi, I'm glad we have a new director. I'm really excited to I'm I'm happy that you're excited to make some changes. See how that works out. I had a couple of questions. If you don't have context on this yet, that is okay. Do you know what has the city council decided about the planning commission's proposed work plan for this year? At at SARC, not tonight, but two weeks ago. I noted that. I had pushed to have commercial parking requirements near our rail stations reduced in in the wake of Del Grande redevelopment. Requiring a lot of parking and two weeks ago, we reviewed the twenty five seventy five. Twenty five eighty five Winchester development, which has which despite being a five minute walk from the light rail station has an issue. Now, the planning commission submitted a work plan. And we I don't think we've taken up any of the items on that work plan. Is there are there plans for us to do that? What's going on with that? Yeah, I can breathe. I was briefed a little bit, again, just coming on board. I know there was a lot of recommended items that went forward from the commission to the council. Pretty sure that's going to get wrapped into the budget adoption, which is going to the council next week. And so what I can do is on the twenty second, your next meeting, do a report back. Disposition of those recommendations. Okay, thank you. Also, the RFP that the city council put out on May on March sixteenth, posed the first planning commission meeting about our housing element would be on July eighth. Are we on track for that? One more time in the question. Sorry, Commissioner. Oh, sure. In the original proposed, like request for proposals for the housing element update, the first planning commission meeting was tentatively scheduled for July eighth. Are we on track for that? I I don't have the answer to that question. I'll answer it with a different answer. Which is, we are having a strategic discussion with the council. Next week on the housing element general, bringing a consultant on board, how it links with the general plan update. I know you guys have been very intimate with that, and it's. It's been a couple of years in the making, and we're coming to a point in the process where we have to decide, right, how these two work efforts are going to blend. These stage interface with each other. They both result land use changes, they both result in environmental impacts, equipment changes. So one thing I can do is, again, next time report out, or if you'd like to listen, at next Tuesday's meeting is a strategic discussion on how to approach the housing element and the general plan together, separate. But again, I invite you both to to listen to that meeting, and again, on next your next meeting, I'll give you a report out on what came of that. So. I would I would very much appreciate that. That's that's excellent.
Is that a public meeting?
Yeah, absolutely. City council meeting next Tuesday.
It's going to be a city council meeting. Okay.
Do you know if we're planning to continue? So a bit of context here, obviously, we have remote public comment. Because of COVID, when we're back in person, do you know if the city plans to retain remote public comments, especially for planning commission meetings? Yeah, I think we just had a report on it this morning. That's the intent. Logistics still being worked out. General, what I'm hearing is no. No intention of coming back for in live meetings until August at the minimum. But I think the intent here at Campbell, I know most jurisdictions, right, that the big term these days is hybrid, is knowing that, you know, the public can access these meetings much more easily. Remote is to maintain the ability for the public to access the meetings remote even when you come back physically in the session. Okay, and lastly, if we have. Bit picky questions and so on, can we email you? And where? I can't. I can't always guarantee an answer, but you're I'll do my best. Feel free feel free to give me an email. No problem. Okay, that's 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 pretty much what I had. Great.
Is there anything else, any other business? With that, I'll thank everybody. Wish you good rest to your Tuesday evening and close the meeting.
See you in two weeks.
Very well, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night.
Bye.
Bye.